Good evening. At this time, the Olive White County School Board will reconvene back into open session.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion. The closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as required by Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia and certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed and only such public business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. At this time, we will take a vote.
Mr. Vine, for some reason, I don't know, have you showing up? So we'll do a verbal vote.
Okay.
And this will round, and then I'll get him straight. Mr. Vine's?
Yay.
Mrs. Dial?
Yay.
Mrs. Tynes?
Yay.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yay.
And Mr. Colling?
Yay.
Thank you.
Okay. The vote is five zero. Thank you. Motion passed.
And Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to adopt the revised Personnel Report and Addendum. The revised Personnel Report is with the clerk if you want a copy.
Okay. We have a motion.
Now second that.
We have a motion and a second to accept the revised Personnel Report.
And I'll do a verbal. Mr. Vine's?
Yay.
Mrs. Dial?
Yay.
Mrs. Tynes?
Yay.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yay.
And Mr. Colling?
Yay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The motion is five zero. Motion passes. Thank you. At this time, I would like to welcome all of you to our last meeting of this fiscal school year. As you know, this last day for students to be in school will be Septem-- um, September. Yeah, okay. June the 16th of 2022, okay? And I think we have had, I know we have had, a successful school year. Olive White County Schools, we are always preparing our students for college, career, and life. At this time, I would ask Mrs. Dial if she would lead us in a pledge of allegiance on a moment of silence. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now please take a moment of silence. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is item number 10, and that's Olive White Achievers with Ms. Lynn Briggs.
Good evening. I'm going to ask Mr. Cooprider if he can get my presentation up and running. Okay. All right. Once again, good evening. The vision for Olive White County Schools is to create a learning environment that will enable every child to discover his or her unique gifts and talents. The Olive White Achiever section of our board meeting gives us an opportunity to recognize and celebrate our students and staff for their unique talents and gifts. I have to say, I don't think we've had a crowd like this for achievers since before the pandemic, and it's great to have a crowd back here where we can recognize all of these students and recognize our staff for their outstanding accomplishments. Just to go over the procedure, in case people aren't familiar with it, I will be recognizing different groups, different individuals. When I call your name in the recognition, please come up. Mr. Mike Lombardo, our Assistant Superintendent, is going to be situated up front, and he will have a certificate or possibly a plaque and a pin for you, and we're going to ask that you stay in front facing the board while I continue the recognition for you or your group. When I'm done with your part, we'll get you to turn around, and that's when it's a great time for family members to come up and get a group photo. We expect that. You should be proud and want to take a photo. We'll also get some pictures as well. So without further ado, we are going to jump right into our first group, and that's going to be from Windsor High School. Windsor High had several track and field athletes qualify for and compete in the state track meet this past weekend. We are glad they could join us tonight so we can recognize them for their accomplishments. First, we have Quincy Wellens, who competed in the 300 hurdles in the state meet, and I don't believe Quincy's with us tonight, but we want to congratulate him for making states. We have Zamari Pearson, who placed seventh in the state in the long jump and eighth in the state in the high jump. Is Zamari here? Oh, okay. We also have Timothy Butler, who placed eighth in the state in the shot put. Is Timothy with us? All right. And I believe, I do believe the last person is with us here. Dontavious Haislett. There we go. All right. All right. Dontavious placed sixth in the state in the long jump, and they are coached by Tyler Mosley, who I know is also here with us tonight. And also Coach Wilhelm Johns, who is not able to join us. So after we get Mr. Mosley here, all right, let's go ahead. Mr. Elliott, Mr. Mosley and Dontavious, if y'all would turn around this way. Mr. Elliott's going to get a photo with the board in the back and Mr. -- there we go. Hold on, Mr. Elliott. Our next achievers are from Carrollton Elementary School. Each year, the AAA Safety Patrol Program recognizes students currently serving as safety patrolers who exemplify what a safety patroler should be. Patrolers serve as student leaders by demonstrating safe habits while helping others understand the importance of safety practices while transitioning within our buildings. Principals, AAA Safety School Patrol Advisors, teachers, or members of law enforcement may nominate a current-year patroler or multiple patrolers who each must be a student in an eligible grade level of the school's patrol program, demonstrate leadership qualities, safety skills, school involvement, and citizenship and volunteerism, and value the patrol experience. To be considered for the award, patrolers must submit an essay on how participation in my AAA Safety Patrol helped me to become a better leader. A panel of Tidewater area community members and AAA staff select 10 local students to receive the Hall of Fame Award for their outstanding service and dedication in making the patrol program at their school successful. This year, three of those 10 students selected for this honor are from Carrollton Elementary School. First is third grader Kayden Rittenhouse. Kayden said in his essay, "A life lesson I learned during the year from being a safety patroler is having patience with other people. You don't have to yell at other kids to get them to listen, and you just have to make sure they understand the situation." I think that's going to be our new motto. What do you think?
That's true.
All right. So while Kayden is up here, we also want to introduce third grader Mason Hager. And while Mason is coming up, he wrote in his essay, "I believe it is important to always be kind to others, especially as a leader. I love showing kindness by giving nice reminders and encouraging others." And our third student from Carrollton Elementary, third grader Emmett Tyssinger. And their school sponsor is Mrs. Marie Berkeley. I'm not sure if she's here. She's coming up. While Ms. Berkeley is coming to the front, I wanted to go ahead and read an excerpt from Emmett's essay. Emmett wrote, "A good leader is someone who doesn't lead by what they think other people believe is right. They lead by what is actually right."
I love it.
And we are very proud of these three students and Ms. Berkeley, and like I said, what incredible words of wisdom in their essays.
Yes.
So congratulations, young men. And I tell you what, Ms. Berkeley, let's get them to turn around and face the audience, and Mr. Elliott will get a photo.
There's a parent, if you would like to come closer, you'd...
Oh, I forgot to take my mask off.
Excellent. Congratulations. All right. Next, we're going to recognize a couple teams from Windsor High, Carrollton Elementary, who participated in the Great Computer Challenge. That happened in May. The long-running event is a joint project of WHRO, the Consortium for Interactive In-- pardon me, Instruction, and Old Dominion University. It provides a competitive opportunity for students in kindergarten through 12th grade from public and private schools to demonstrate their knowledge of various computer applications and programming skills. First, we'll recognize Windsor High. Windsor High had teams that, two teams that brought home awards. Receiving honorable mention was the Desktop Presentations Team of Kiara Key Towns, and Javonte McNeil. The Integrated Applications Team placed third. Team members include Journey Johnson, and Joanie Rich. The teams were coached by Tyler Mosley, I know Mr. Mosley's here, and Sharon Smallwood Moore from Windsor High. Okay. So now that Mr. Mosley has joined y'all up front, we'll go ahead and get you to turn around to the audience, and Mr. Elliott can get another picture. Teams of third through fifth graders competed in the category of visual program--
Ms. Briggs, I think there was a parent that wanted to come and take a picture. Is there a parent that wanted to take a picture? Okay. Come on, we don't want you to miss that picture.
Oh, yeah, come on back up. Thank you, Ms. Tynes.
Mr. Mosley, come back up with the students. I'm sorry, Mrs. Briggs.
No, no.
Come on, she's proud of you.
I'm sure that car ride home might be a little uncomfortable. Okay. Teams of third through fifth graders competed in the category of visual programming block coding level two. Each team had two hours to collaborate, compete, complete and submit a project using the Scratch-Drag-and-Drop programming language that solved a problem designed by the challenge coordinators. The Carrollton Elementary team, consisting of only third graders, created a working piano with, which one could play individual notes by pressing keys on the keyboard. The team are in first place in the category. The members of the Carrollton Elementary Great Computer Challenge team include Alice with alternates Violet Pilo and Benjamin Corelli Soares, and I'm not sure that Benjamin's with us tonight, but we want to congratulate him. And the team was coached by Michelle Pilo, computer science teacher for Carrollton Elementary. I know Ms. Pilo's here. All right, now that Ms. Pilo's here, why don't we get you guys to turn around and face the audience? And Lance, perfect, let's hold your certificate up. Violet, there you go. And Mr. Elliott will get a picture, and family members, come on up.
Look at Mr. Elliott, really quick.
Nicely done. Our next honoree is from Smithville Middle School. Kima Anderson, a seventh grader, was awarded first place in the middle school category for the annual Holocaust Visual Arts Contest sponsored by the United Jewish Community of the Virginia Peninsula. Kima received $200 and was recognized during the Yom Hashoah Remembrance Ceremony held in Newport News in May. And we have a picture of her art up on your screen that won first place. That was her artwork.
Outstanding.
Very, yes. Beautiful. So Kima, if you want to turn around now, Mr. Elliott will get a picture of you, and if you feel comfortable taking your mask off for the photo, you can. If not, you can leave it on. I just love the emotion that picture conveys. I really do. At our last meeting, we recognized some Smithville High School solar teams who had competed in the, regionally in the state, and tonight, we're recognizing some of the KidWinn teams. I believe quite a few of the students on the team we're recognizing tonight are on the soccer teams, and if you are aware, these Smithville High Girls and Smithville High Boys both made the state semis for soccer, and I believe their, both teams are traveling to Fredericksburg tonight to play at 9:00 AM. So this may be, there may only be a few students, but please know they're occupied, and we wish them well, and we still want to recognize them tonight. SHS had a successful showing at the state and even national level in the KidWinn competition. First team Breeze Works placed fourth at the state level, and that team consists of Kyle Nester and Parker Pack. After placing at the regional and state level, Team Airbenders competed in the national KidWinn competition last month in San Antonio, Texas. The team brought home some hardware, as they were recognized with the High School Innovation Award for going above and beyond their development of their one-phase and three-phase generators. The official roster of the national team includes Jalen Marble, Emma Forbes, Katie Lutz, Liam Lutz, Patrick Leslie, and Kyle Nester. Their coaches who are here are Heather Greer and Adam Shipman. And we're going to have Ms. Greer and Mr. Shipman stay up front because we're also recognizing another set of students that they worked with. So if y'all stay up here, we're also going to recognize them for assisting with the Sea, Air, and Land Challenge, which is an Office of Naval Research-sponsored program in which teams of high school-age students learn about engineering process through the design and build of a robotic system. The systems are then used to compete in challenges relevant to the Department of Defense, which mimic missions encountered by the military, national security agencies, and first responders. The Sea, Air, and Land Challenge provides the opportunity for high school students to tackle a difficult engineering task while working with educators and engineering mentors. The teams have 12 to 16 weeks, one semester, to design and build unmanned vehicles and intelligence, surveillance, and reconnaissance payloads to compete in the challenge of their choice. They may build submersibles for the sea challenge, drones for the air challenge, or rovers for the land challenge. The challenges are designed by engineers at the Penn State Applied Research Laboratory and by some of the country's finest Navy SEALs and Green Berets. The following engineering 3 and 4 students won best execution of the challenge for their category in the Southeast Regional Competition. First, from Team Sea Challenge, Hannah Brison, and Kevin Parker. This team built a submersible robot that had to pick up and place various payloads in the correct spot in the pool. Their only visual was the camera they installed onboard the submersible. Team Air Challenge consisted of Aiden Hall, and Jamari Sawyer Myrick. This team had to outfit a drone with a camera, electromagnet, and computer that read QR codes and controlled the electromagnet. Their goal was to pick up a metal marker and drop it off at a specific site by reading the QR code. And finally, Team Land Challenge consists of Ryan Smith and Aubrey Wilson. This team built a land robot that was able to move obstacles out of the way, pick up various weighted payloads, and deliver them to their correct place in the ring. Their only visual was the camera they installed on the robot. And we want to congratulate all these students, and we're going to get you to now turn this way for a photo. Mr. Elliott's going to probably arrange you guys so we can get a better picture. And, and parents, you can come up and get your photos, too.
Hey, guys, can you guys actually come all the way to the podium in the way? Can we just like squeeze this way? I mean, you two, you two, I love you guys. You guys over here.
Congratulations. Very proud of you. Nicely done. All right. Now, we're going to honor some of our businesses with a V SBA Honor Roll Award. Businesses large and small, corporate-owned or family-run, play a key role in supporting our communities and local schools. They contribute to our school divisions in many ways, including helping schools with in-kind or financial contributions, donating to scholarship programs, supporting extracurricular activities, offering internship opportunities, volunteering in the schools, and sponsoring field trips. This type of support is invaluable. The Virginia School Boards Association acknowledges deserving businesses by including them in the annual V SBA Business Honor Roll. School divisions are invited to nominate businesses as a way to say thank you for their contribution in the support of public education. We are recognizing three partnerships that have been incredibly supportive of our CTE program with a special plaque created in the Smithville High School Maker Space. First, we're recognizing Carr Farms, and I'm going to see if Mark and Sha-- and/or Sean Carr are with us tonight. And we're going to ask all, all of our representatives if you will stay up front, and we'll get a photo of all three. Mark and Sean Carr of Carr Farms have nominated Olive White County Schools for the America's Farmers Grow Grants. In the past two years, the division has received $30,000 in funds from this program, and that's directly because the Carrs have helped to nominate Olive White County Schools for that, and we thank you. We also are acknowledging Lee Bear, and I think we might have Daniel Peterson. We want to thank Lee Bear for their continued monetary support of the welding lab through donation of equipment, and they're also working with the division to build the Youth Registered Apprenticeship Program. We appreciate their time, effort, and manpower to get this up and running. And our third honoree is Sumitomo Drive Technologies, and I believe we have Joe Gopi with us tonight. We thank Sumitomo for their support of internships for manufacturing, welding, and engineering students, which includes paid internship opportunities. They have been instrumental in showing interns the multiple pathways to achieving their end goal, and we wanted to publicly thank Carr Farms, Lee Bear, and Sumitomo for their support and generosity to help make our CTE programs such outstanding programs. And at this time, if y'all, if the representatives wouldn't mind turning around, Mr. Elliott Lots of great news tonight. Lots of good news. Now it's time for our A, B, C, D winner. Each quarter, we recognize one of our support staff members who's gone above and beyond the Call of Duty. Anyone throughout the division is invited to submit nominations. A panel reviews the nominees and selects the quarterly winners. Our 2021-2022 fourth-quarter A, B, C, D award winner is probably someone that I would say just about everybody in this room knows, Mr. Calvin Kelly, courier for Olive White County School. The nomination for Mr. Kelly stated the following. Calvin's title may be courier, however, he does so much more. He demonstrates grit and great by representing all aspects of the division. He collaborates with each school, payroll, and accounts payable to make sure the pony mail gets to the right people in a timely manner. When we have an item of urgency, he is always ready to step up to the challenge. He will make special trips to get the information to the right location quickly. He goes above and beyond when working with special projects to get items moved to storage, pick up items from storage, and double-check for available furniture before departments make a purchase. He is a team player. He deserves to be recognized for all of his hard work, extra effort, and pride that he has in regards to his position with Olive White County Schools. He was nominated by Sandy Carr in the Finance Department. As part of his award, Calvin is receiving a $50 gift card, thanks to the generous support of Blue Bird Bus Sales of Virginia, and he is receiving a personalized plaque created in the Smithville High School Maker Space. And we can't thank you enough, Calvin, for all you do, and we'd love for you to turn around so we can get a photo of you. I was just informed that several members of the Windsor High Track Team, who were not here, and they went first, arrived, and we would love to have them come back up with Mr. Mosley and the other student that we recognized already, Dontavious Haislett. I believe we have Timothy Butler and Zamari Pearson? We know it's a challenge to be at the very beginning. Sometimes it's hard to get here right at that six o'clock hour. And as a reminder, Zamari Pearson placed seventh. Zamari? That's some... Thank you, Zaimir. Zaimir placed seventh in the state in the long jump and eighth in the state in the high jump. And congratulations, Zaimir. Timothy Butler placed eighth in the state in the shot put. We want to congratulate Timothy. And Dontavious, who was up here earlier, was sixth in the long jump. So you guys had six and seven in the long jump. Thank you. Thank you, Board, for letting me do that. Okay. At this time, I think we conclude Achievers, but I'm up under special presentation, so may I keep going, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Our current school board liaison from Smithfield High graduates tomorrow and will be leaving us for college. Before we recognize her, I want to introduce the new school board liaison from Smithfield High School, who will be stepping or joining Kylie on the panel here. That student is Samantha Conyers. Samantha, if you'll come on up, you can stand here and face the board while I read something about you. Samantha is currently a sophomore at Smithfield High and resides in the Newport District. Thought I'd pass that along. She is a member of the Beta Club and a member of the varsity volleyball team and participates with Operation Smile. She also hopes to attend college and study marine biology. We want to congratulate Samantha, and we look forward to having her on the board representing Smithfield High for the next two years. So congratulations, and we'll get Mr. Elliott to get a picture of you. Okay. Congratulations, Samantha. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Neely Harris to join me down here. I know, isn't it? Okay. At this time, we'd like to recognize Neely, the outgoing S H S liaison, with a resolution of appreciation and a plaque of appreciation. So first is your plaque. Yep. Yes, just stand and face the board. That's good right there. Yep. All right. The resolution reads, "Whereas Neely Harris has served with distinction as a student liaison member of the School Board of Isle of Wight County during the 2020-2021 and 2021-2022 school years, and whereas Neely has served with commendation as a student liaison to the Isle of Wight County School Board, and whereas Neely has fulfilled the duties of a student liaison representative with dedication and eminence and brought honor to herself, her family, Smithfield High School, and the Isle of Wight County School Board, and whereas Neely, during Neely's tenure, she studied the issues and came to each meeting prepared to provide input, and whereas Neely has been an energetic and essential part of the Isle of Wight County School Board, and whereas Neely's term as student liaison to the School Board of Isle of Wight County ends on June 30, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved that the Isle of Wight County School Board wishes to publicly thank Neely for her service for the past two years, and be it further resolved that the Isle of Wight County School Board extends its best wishes as Neely prepares for her future, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Neely and a copy be spread in the minutes of the Isle of Wight County School Board meeting of June 9, 2022." And I believe this is actually going to be an action item for the Board to vote on, correct, Tracy? All right. So Neely, you stay here, if you don't mind. And actually, you know what? If you come over here and stand while they're voting, we'll get Mr. Elliott to get a photo.
Okay. You heard that this breaks. This is an action item for Neely. We need a motion.
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair, to adopt a resolution of appreciation to Neely Harris, the student liaison to the School Board from Smithfield High School.
Second. I'm going to second this one, Neely, for you. Or you've heard the, we have a motion and a second. At this time, we will take a vote.
Don't leave yet. You're fine. No, no.
Neely, you're already looking like a college student.
Yeah.
Drumroll. Mr. Cunningham? Mr. Cunningham?
Yay.
Yay.
It's going to be all right. Okay. And in addition, while you're here, we want to share that a new plaque will be displayed proudly by Isle of Wight County Schools in this room that lists all of our student liaisons to the School Board, beginning with the 1999-2000 school year, when the student liaison was a young man from Smithfield High School who returned to his home county now to raise his family, and he's watching us on travel from Nebraska. That's Mr. Lewis Edmonds. So when I'm long gone, y'all won't have to call and ask me who the liaisons were, since I've been here, I think, since they've all been, you know, on board. But we want to congratulate Neely. We have Neely and Kylie, and we will be adding Samantha's name to this plaque. So congratulations.
Motion passes five to zero, Neely.
Neely, Ms. Jackson has something.
Oh, we're really going to miss Neely.
While this is going to conclude Achievers and the special presentation for liaisons, I think Ms. Tynes may have a special announcement at this time as well.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Briggs. As you all know, tonight is Dr. Thornton's last School Board meeting with us as superintendent. I would like to say a few words about Dr. Thornton on behalf of my colleagues on the Board. Since 2015, Dr. Thornton has been a visionary leader for Isle of Wight County Schools. When he arrived here, he wanted to ensure, wanted to ensure all students could discover their unique gifts and talents. He focused on deeper learning and providing more opportunities to expose students to dual enrollment classes at high school and STEM programs in elementary schools. Now, every elementary student participates in coding classes, beginning in kindergarten. He also knew not every student would choose college as their pathway after graduation. Dr. Thornton made it his mission, and the mission of Isle of Wight County Schools, to ensure students were graduating with skills and certifications necessary to be immediately employed by local industry. He and his team redesigned, and redesigned, excuse me, the Career and Technical Education Program, known as the CTE, so students would attend classes in our high school. Facilities were built and renovated to provide state-of-the-art equipment in a workplace environment. Authentic learning and partnerships with businesses allowed, with businesses allowed new programs to flourish. The Agrocauter program found a new home, a working farm run by students on land behind Windsor Elementary School. The site is showcased by a beautiful barn and classroom facility, as students manage livestock, produce, and equipment on a daily basis. Dr. Thornton had the vision to renovate a freestanding building at Smithfield High School to house welding, nursing, engineering, manufacturing, and culinary arts. The award-winning facility is also home to Makerspace and the student-run restaurant named Turner and Ten. To commemorate Dr. Thornton's contribution to the CTE program and the division, and the creation of a school-to-work pipeline for students and employers, the School Board of Isle of Wight County intends to name the Career Building at Smithfield High School, the Thornton Career Center. If you have any comments on the naming, you can contact the clerk, Mrs. Rued, by June 30. Congratulations, Dr. Thornton. At this time, are there any special guests out there?
Yes.
Okay. We have Mrs. Thornton with us this evening. Come on up here. Dr. Thornton, come on. The family's here. Your son is here, and we're going to take some pictures. We're going to take the Thornton family pictures.
Mine is over, hold there.
Okay. I was hoping that some of the students and staff that we had here from the Smithfield High School program, but I couldn't let them know without spoiling the surprise. I was hoping they would stay to hear this. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. At this time, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, and that is strategic plan updates with Mr. Lombardo. And Mr. Lombardo, you are reporting to us for maybe the last time in a regular meeting?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Thornton, this evening I will be presenting the Isle of Wight County School Division's 2022 through 2027 Strategic Plan as an action item. The Isle of Wight County Schools' Strategic Plan development process represents extensive stakeholder engagement by parents, students, teachers, support staff, administrators, and community members to collaborate on this plan's co-authorship. The collaborative development of the Strategic Plan has been a year-long process, beginning in September of 2021. The steering committee met in the fall of 2021 and also in the spring of 2022 for five total meetings. They identified the broad focus areas of the Strategic Plan. Work groups met in February and March of 2022. They developed broad goal statements, performance objectives, and strategies for each of the Strategic Plan focus areas. In addition to the work of the parents, students, teachers, support staff, administrators, and community members on the steering committee, and also on the work groups, the development of this plan was informed through feedback received by community forums in April. Those forums took place at Smithfield High School and Windsor High School, as well as feedback that we received through our online Let's Talk platform, where community members were able to provide feedback on the plan from the comfort of their homes. A final opportunity for community members to provide feedback took place at the May 18 public hearing on the Strategic Plan. In closing, the Strategic Plan will provide direction and focus for the division as we move forward, and we are grateful for the tremendous community involvement in the development of the plan, which is, again, before you this evening, as an action item. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions from the Board.
Okay. You heard the update coming from Mrs. Lombardo. Do you have any concerns or questions or...
No.
At this time? All right. Hearing none, we will take action on this, on the Strategic Plan for the Isle of Wight County School. Many hours and many people put in a lot of hours to get this together for this meeting tonight. It's completed one time. Thank you, Mr. Lombardo, for heading up that team, you and Mrs. Getz. We appreciate it.
And Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the 22, 2022 to 2027 Strategic Plan as presented this evening.
Second.
You hear, we have a motion and a second on the floor on the Strategic Plan. If there are no questions at this time, we will take a vote. Mr. Cunningham?
Yay.
Thank you very much. We have an official Strategic Plan in place for Isle of Wight County Schools. Thank you, everyone that participated, and some of you participated and didn't even know you participated, but you did. Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, item number 12, Request to Speak on Agenda Items. And this is the portion of the meeting where the public get to participate, come up, and speak on anything that we have on the agenda this evening. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed to speak?
Yes, ma'am. First, I'm sorry, let me read my thing. In accordance to Policy BDDH-E, presentations of information on any subject will be concluded by the discretion of the Board. No person will be recognized to speak more than once. Citizens scheduled on the agenda to speak will be permitted four minutes maximum time for their presentation. Delegations will be requested to limit their speakers to two. Persons speaking are asked to be specific, state the issues for the Board's consideration, and attach a copy of your prepared remarks. If you have remarks, they should be given to the Board Clerk. Please do not approach the Board members. Any matters relating to specific students will be heard by the School Board only in a closed meeting. First, we have Ms. Ford? No. Okay. Ms. Jennifer Rawls.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I have one request today, and that is for you to table the discussion of board compensation. And I'm asking that because of the way that it was requested. Mr. Vines requested an increase in board compensation. I think it was during his first board meeting, but he hadn't even filed his financial disclosure at that point. And his financial disclosure conflicts with what he put on his resume when he submitted it to you to be considered for a seat as an appointed board member. And I would like to know, I think you owe the citizens of the county an explanation as to whether or not you knew that his resume conflicted with his financial disclosure. He didn't file his financial disclosure until after a four-year request was made, and even then, he didn't sign it. So I think it's inappropriate for someone to request an increase in compensation immediately after taking a board seat, especially when he hasn't fulfilled the basic requirements of taking that board seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, do we have another?
Yes. Ms. Brenda Rawls? She's not? Okay. Thank you. That was all.
Okay. Thank you. We always like when citizens participate in our meetings. Okay. At this time, we'll move to Section 13, Board... Thank you. We always like when citizens participate in our meetings. Okay. At this time, we'll move to Section 13, Board Member Committee Reports and Information. Mr. Cunningham, do you have a committee report or information for this month?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vines?
No.
Do you have any?
No, Madam Chair.
Ms. Dial?
No.
Mr. Colick?
Madam Chair, I do have a bunch of information, no committee reports. Most of it I'm gonna save and send to you to hopefully include in another meeting. The one thing that I do want to mention here, because it is receiving a lot of public attention throughout the country...
May I ask you a question first?
Yes.
This section is about the board members committee, like, you know the committees we've been assigned to? That's where we do the reports here. Now, if it doesn't concern a committee that you have been assigned to, you can save it for board comment.
Oh, I was looking... Okay. I was looking at other information, but that's fine.
Okay. All right. Okay. Other information sometimes, like, we go onto a conference or something like that.
Yeah. This is basically from the Board of Supervisors meeting. They had a working session the other day...
Well, you can do that.
About school security.
Okay.
And it was actually pretty in-depth. Dr. Coleman took the lead for the school system. And I think what ultimately came out of that is we need a good working session led by the school board, bringing in all the stakeholders that we can identify together to make sure, we're not just throwing money, you know, or positions at a situation, but we're doing a very well-thought-out methodical way to make sure our schools are very, very safe, but they still look very inviting, you know, for our kids.
Okay. Business for security.
Yeah. So this is just more for information right now, but at some point, I will be asking for a work group so we can start working on this, because I consider it very important. But Dr. Coleman probably has some more information on it that we can discuss later. But I just wanted to make sure the public is aware, we are looking at this.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I apologize, it did concern this section of the meeting, because you did attend the Board of Supervisors meeting, and you bring back the information from that meeting, and I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I was just thinking with some things that you had that you wanted to share with us.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll move on to item number 13.2, Acting Superintendent. And this is an action item. I can recall when Dr. Thornton came to us, I think I recall making a statement, "As we lose someone, we also gain someone." And Dr. Thornton is leaving us, so we need a temporary replacement. And the board, at this time, would like to motion on the individual that they have decided for replacement. Do I hear the motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Dr. Coleman as the acting superintendent and the contract.
Second motion.
It has been motioned second, that we approve Dr. Christopher Coleman as our acting superintendent. Okay. At this time, the board will take a vote.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yea.
Thank you.[841.82][841.82](CROWD CHUCKLES).
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Dr. Coleman.[863.12][863.12](APPLAUSE). This is Dr. Coleman.[868.82][868.82](APPLAUSE). Now, I'll make an announcement, because I don't want anyone calling to the central office of ours, saying, "We want to speak to the new superintendent, Dr. Coleman." Dr. Coleman, Dr. Coleman will start as of July 1 as the acting superintendent. Dr. Thornton is still our superintendent until midnight, June 30th. Thank you. Okay.
You hear that, Chris?[898.82][898.82](LAUGHING).
Okay. All right. At this time, we will have a little update by board member, Mr. John Colick, on the board compensation. Mr. Colick and Mr. Cunningham, who's with us virtually tonight, they were assigned to a little ad hoc committee from the board to address the compensation, look into the compensation, and they came back a few months ago with the report. We tabled that at that time for, you know, just give us a little time to think about it and to look into everything, or all the board members had an opportunity to think about what they wanted to do and their actions going forward. At this time, Mr. Colick is gonna give us a little update from that report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A lot has happened since we talked about that, I believe it was in March. We had several options on the table, potential options. I think at the time, the most palatable option was either Option 2 or Option 3. And Option 2, Option 3, excuse me, was overall 20% increase in current salary, which would basically push the school board members' salary from $5,000 a year to $6,000 a year, and the chair's salary, please correct me if I'm wrong, packed from $6,000 to $7,000 a year, and that would be the maximum the chair can get, would be $1,000 more. Option 2 was really to push it to $7,000 per member or $8,000 for the chair. So that's where we're at. I would like to make sure everybody is aware that if this was the pass tonight, if somebody makes a motion, this was the pass, it would not take place. The raise would not take effect until January 1st of next year. It is not allowed to take effect until after the next election, as we discussed in February and March.
That's correct. So we've heard the report update coming from Mr. Colick, and if you want to have... What's your pleasure?
Are you talking about between the two different...
Well, I'll make a motion.
Oh.
I don't have a... I will make a motion. I will make a motion that we accept the Option 3, 20% increase for the Iowa White County School Board, starting January 1, 2023, if it's approved, at this time.
I second the motion.
All right. Would any board member like to discuss anything? I know I would. This is my second term on this board, and I think when I came on the board in 2012, this is the salary that they were receiving. But just as Mr. Colick said earlier, times have changed, and in the last few months, times have really changed in the economy. And it's not like the little stifle we are getting from this board is gonna make a major difference in our lifestyle. But if only some of you actually knew the citizens, the time as board members that we have put in in the last two years, or one year, that we've had some of our new board members, it's tremendous. I mean, we get emails, 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, when the phone ringing to tell you, "Hey, I want this, I want that." And even just today, some of us have attended five, not five, four meetings, starting at 9:00 this morning to this meeting this evening. That's using our vehicles across the highways to get there. And do we, we do have an opportunity, if we want to, to submit our mileage, but we don't, because we just take the little stifle and we're satisfied with that. So the $1,000 that, if we vote on it tonight, increase that you're gonna give the board members, that pretty much is just gonna keep them going in the gas tank, and that's about it.
Yeah.
With the times we're living in now. And that's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to give you a little update on that. It's not like we're getting major dollars for this, we're not. But you know what? It takes a lot of time, and most of us are doing this because we love the students. It's all about the students, okay? Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may? I don't think there's any secret of what my position on raises has been since we started. I didn't come in, like Madam Chair said, to make any money. I didn't support the pay raise that began the year. If it was not that we're getting ready to hit over 8.5% inflation rate, probably be announced tomorrow, early next week, I would probably still be opposed to it. But we do spend a lot of our own money on different things, whether it's paper, pens, gas. So tonight, I'm gonna vote that we do increase it. It's not much, but it at least cover the gas, as the chairwoman had said. So I know some people may get upset with that. It is what it is. But I think this, right now, I think it's something that's not only deserved, but it is needed to help recompensate us for a little bit of the stuff. Okay? So I am going to be voting in favor.
Anyone else like to say anything? Okay. Well, we have a motion. At this time, we will take a vote. Mr. Cunningham, what's your vote?
I vote yea.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda. We're 14, Financial Presentation, Dr. Coleman.
Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Thornton, I'm here to present the monthly financial reports. What you have in front of you is the check registry. Look at it. I want to move right on from the check registry to the actually large ticket items. You see two large ticket items that I wanted to pinpoint.
Mm-hmm.
There'll be the Eastern Floor Covering at $57,686.15, and it will be the Dale Computer Purchase for the Computers for Engineering Students at $51,226.87. So I wanted to make sure I pinpointed those two large ticket items. Are there any questions concerning those items?
We don't have any? Any questions for Dr. Coleman? Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Next, I want to take a peek at the May Financial Summary. What we have is the percentage at 91.2% of expenditure funds to this point, day and time. Now, two years ago, we're at 88.7%, and last year, at this time, we're at 91.4%. So we're still falling right between the last two years. We're still at a great point with the number of days left in the actual, in the month. Lastly, Madam Chair, I would like to go over the Facilities Use Report. And Facilities Use, we are, we did revenue at $250,000, and at this time, we're at $260,011. So we're actually over in that category.
Okay.
Are there any questions concerning that?
No.
Thank you. Okay. This is an action item.
No, ma'am.
It's not tonight?
That'll be during consent.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'm sorry.
No problem.
All right. Dr. Thornton, you're gonna do the budget approval?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair and board members, the General Assembly in the state has finally approved a budget, and there is an increase for Iowa White County of $296,457. And as you all are aware, the Board of Supervisors set aside approximately $812,000 in the instructional category, and said that when schools needed these funds, they could request them. So this is additional funds, and so you need to amend your budget in the instructional line category to receive this $296,457,000 from state money. And that will reduce the 812, so the Board of Supervisors do not have to give us that entire 812, because this is additional money that we weren't counting on.
Okay. So this is subtracted from the 812 that they're holding aside?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So this, we do need action to amend our budget.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended for year 2022 to 2023 budget by adding $296,457 to the instructional category.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second that, Madam Chair. I do have one question.
Mr. Colick, a second.
I'm sorry. I do have one question on that, and it's just a technical question, is do we have to go back to the Board of Supervisors again and say, "Okay, the state's appropriated this, can we have it?"
Yeah, that's the next item.[1584.33][1584.33](LAUGHING).
Okay.
Yeah. We have to go back.
You're learning the finance.
So we have...
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Colick is way ahead of us.
Yep.
All right. At this time, we're gonna vote on the budget that the state has sent down, the $296,457, okay? Yes, we're gonna vote to accept it.
Mr. Cunningham?
Mr. Cunningham?
Yea.
Thank you. The vote is 5-0. Yea. Thank you very much. The motion passes. At this time, we'll move on to the next item, which is action as well, and Dr. Thornton.
Yes. So, Madam Chair and board members, this does require you to make a motion to direct the superintendent to request this additional amount and appropriate it into the instructional category from the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Did you get that?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to direct the superintendent to request the additional appropriation of $296,457 in the instructional category from the Board of Supervisors.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
It has been motioned second. At this time, we will take a vote. Mr. Cunningham?
Yea.
Thank you.
Eric got too fast. Yes, it passed.
Okay. It passed 5-0. Thank you very much.
So, Madam Chair, if I could, if you could indulge me and the board...
Okay.
With that extra $296,000, that does free up that money for the Board of Supervisors to use as they see fit. It doesn't cost taxpayers any additional funds, and I just wanted to read a little possible request...
Okay.
That you guys may consider and the public. Makina, Leila, Jose, Xavier, Miranda, Nivalle, Tess, Raoul, Ellie, Ellie, Eliana, Annabelle, Jackie, Isaiah, Jacy, Metee, Jayla, Irma, Eva, Mary Jo, Lexi, and Alethea. On May 24th, 19 elementary students and two teachers were killed in their school in Uvalde, Texas. Our hearts broke once again over the massive tragedy of a school... Our hearts broke once again over the massive tragedy of a school shooting. As usual, we reviewed our procedures and practices to see where we could make improvements for the safety of every student employee in our buildings. One of the possible solutions we found is one we attempted to address in the budget. We need resource officers in all of our schools full-time, and this board voted for that. The school board agreed with the sheriff's office to the funding for the SROs in the next year's budget, but that funding was removed from the sheriff's budget at the county's request. After May twenty-four, school safety was on the agenda at the supervisors' work session last Thursday. There was a recommendation to create a task force or committee to have a broader discussion on school safety. I am pleased that this is happening, but I am concerned about the present. A committee or task force will take time. We already know that a highly trained resource officer is one key part of the overall plan we need to move forward with establishing SROs in our elementary schools immediately. It will take time to hire and train those positions, all which has to happen before they can be assigned to a school. Any further delays will likely cause another year without these positions. Sheriff James Clark is the county's leader for safety and security. He has requested these positions since he took office. I value and respect his opinion on safety. He and his staff have done an amazing job supporting our schools. Last week, the state finalized their budget and allocated an additional two-hundred-ninety-six thousand to Holloway County. This additional money out of the eight-hundred-and-twelve in the instructional set aside, I'm requesting that the school board, teachers, and citizens of this county ask the Board of Supervisors to use that additional funding to cover the cost of five elementary SROs in Sheriff Clark's budget. This would allow him to move forward with hiring and training the new officers now. We want to build on a strong partnership with the sheriff's office to provide a safer and more secure work environment for every student and staff member. The officers love this community and love their job. I have no doubt about the dedication of any SRO in our schools and their ability to protect our students, even when it puts their own lives at risk. That is why they proudly wear the uniform and badge. A suggestion from the supervisors was to possibly look at hiring school security officers, and this is an alternative that the school board can do. These positions would not be under the direction of the sheriff's office and would require Holloway County schools or an outside contractor to train and supervise employees who would be carrying weapons in our school. The sheriff and his highly trained officers are the best answer to protecting our students and staff. I have heard the stories of Uval, Uvalde, of a student covering themselves in a classmate's blood to play dead so they wouldn't be shot, or the survivors testifying the other day before Congress that they were afraid to set foot back in a public school building. We think this won't happen here, and I'm sure Uvalde and every town and city that has experienced this thought the same thing. Mental health issues are everywhere, and this is the root cause in the majority of these senseless acts. The task force needs to investigate mental health support for our students and in our community. Mental health issues that spur violence in individuals must be addressed, but I think we can all agree that even with our best efforts, school shootings will still occur. We need to be able to provide an immediate response on-site to any active threat in any one of our schools. Let's not delay making SROs in all of our schools a reality. I don't want to ever have another superintendent making a similar plea by reading off a list of names of our students. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We've heard the requests coming from Dr. Thornton. I would just like to say, just as Sheriff Clark, since I've been a board member for Holloway County, I've always advocated for SROs, and every year, it was always put on the back burner, we can't do it this year, or we don't need them in elementary schools. I don't have to go any further. We need them in all of our schools, all nine school buildings. And I, I am, we had our retirement dinner the day that happened, and on my, I found out just before, while I was dressing, what had happened, and on my way there, I was very emotional. When I got there, I, I was really emotional to the point, I asked everyone to stand a moment of silence for what had happened, and I, and I told them at the end, this could have been Holloway County schools today. We do not want this to happen here. We do not want this to happen in another school building in America. But tonight, this boy can make some action to put something in place where this maybe will not happen in this county. And at this time, I would like to hear from my board members about Dr. Thornton's last request for the bullet.
Madam Chair, as, as you know, I do have a little experience in security, and one of the things that we always see when we're looking at layered security, our security officers and law enforcement, and there is a distinction between the two, and both are vital in layered security, different layers, but I think right now, because of the timing that is going to take both to get law enforcement officers and to do a study, I think it's imperative that we go back to the Board of Supervisors, we ask them to reconsider so we can start, we may not get every SRO we need in September, but at least they'll be in the pipeline. So I do agree with Dr. Thornton on this. We need to do that, and we need to also continue forward with the task force to make sure we not only get this aspect, we get the entire package and we do it right.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Colick. Ms. Dial, Ms. Vines?
I just agree to both Dr. Thornton and Mr. Colick. We just need them. They're absolutely necessary in all of the schools. I don't think one school is more important than the other. We need them in all of them, so I agree.
Mr. Vines?
And I agree with Dr. Thornton also. You know, we mourn the loss of those kids, and we don't want that to happen here in Holloway County. And we want to take every precaution necessary.
Okay. So at this time, would the board like to put a motion to send that request to the Board of Supervisors?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion that we follow through on Dr. Thornton's suggestion, and we request the amount from the Board of Supervisors to hire the necessary SROs for our school system.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cunningham? At this time, we're gonna take a vote. What is your pleasure?
My pleasure is yea.
Thank you.
Mr. Vines?
Yea.
Mrs. Dial?
Yea.
Mrs. Tynes?
Yea.
And Mr. Colick?
Yea.
Thank you.
Motion passes. To all of the parents that emailed us, called us, the next step is to go to your board of representative, Board of Supervisors representative, and whisper in their ear, we need this for our children, okay? Thank you. School board has done their part.
Madam Chair, if I could say too, and I think Mr. Colick addressed, the Board of Supervisors did convene that.
Right.
Workshop, and I believe are taking this very serious.
Okay.
And had that preliminary discussion, so like I said, I'm sure they will be willing to listen and possibly take that, that first step. But I do hope that there's a thorough study done, and we do that task force. It's a great thing.
But it would really help if we get a whole lot of support emailing your board members, okay? And they will know the support is out there from the citizens. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Thank you, Dr. Thornton. We have support services from Mr. Todd Christensen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Thornton. I wanted to provide a support services and operations update this evening, and in light of everything that's been going on, I did choose to focus solely on some safety and security measures that we are taking here in the county. Now, for obvious reasons, we can't get into some of the details of the certain apparatuses that we do have in place, but just to kind of give the public and the board an overview of some of the measures that we are taking. So first things first, we do have additional patrols. That's being coordinated very closely with our local law enforcement. That relationship that we have with the sheriff's department, I'm on the cell phone with Sergeant Johnson, Lieutenant AC on an almost daily basis, and that relationship with the schools and the sheriff office and law enforcement has proved very beneficial, and I think is one that will continue to prove beneficial moving forward. We do have schools reviewing their crisis plans. This is something that's done on a regular basis anyway, but as Dr. Thornton alluded to earlier, we always use this as an opportunity for us to review our current best practices, and we're certainly doing that at each and every one of our schools. Also, the review of our visitor procedures. We do have a very specific procedure in place when we have visitors at our schools, making sure that schools kind of revisit those procedures and are implementing them to a T without exception is another step that we're doing. Lockdown drills, something that we, we always do, occurs at least twice a year so that schools are ready, as ready as you can be when something does happen, that the students and staff know what the procedure is. And then additionally, we also have active shooter drills that are conducted. We actually had one very recently in April, and that's something that law enforcement does on their end to make sure that they're ready if the case ever happens where they're needed as well. Additionally, we have, Mr. Cooprider has been doing some amazing work through grants and other funding resources to upgrade cameras throughout the county, badge readers being installed at access points in the building, threat assessment training. We actually have someone from DCJS, the Threat Assessment Coordinator, who's gonna be coming down over the summer to provide administrators with training on threat assessments, so that will be very beneficial, I believe. A campus safety and violence prevention forum, I personally will be attending that next week in Norfolk, and I know Dr. Coleman has attended in the past and has told me that there's some great information there. I look forward to that. And then I know that, again, Dr. Thornton mentioned the focus on mental health, I think is something that our schools are taking very seriously, and of course, that directly ties in to this entire situation that we're talking about. So I just wanted to give the board and the public a very brief overview of some of the measures that we are taking in the county. Happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions for Mr. Christensen? Thank you very much, Mr. Christensen. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, fifteen point two surplus items for auction. That's Mr. Christensen as well.
Yes, ma'am. So we do have several items from the transportation annex that we are looking to put up for auction. Specifically, we have seven buses. These buses are high mileage, have reached a point where the cost to repair will, is not financially, doesn't make financial sense for us to do, so it's gonna be better for us to put those vehicles up for auction. Same boat for three vans that we have, very high mileage vans, that again, the cost to repair just doesn't make financial sense. And then the last one on the list are some tires, there's actually six tires that we no longer use to outfit our vehicles, so that we don't need them as spares anymore, so we're looking to auction off those tires as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We heard the report coming from Mr. Christensen about the surplus items for auction. This is an action item, so we need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the items presented as surplus for auction. I think this is a great start.
I second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor to, on surplus items for auction. At this time, please take a vote. Mr. Cunningham?
Yea.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, Dr. Coleman, new Hardy Elementary School update.
Madam Chair, members of the school board, this will be the new Hardy update. This update will be a little bit different than normally, where we just see the drone. Want to actually go over a couple of floor plans. Myself and Dr. Thornton had an opportunity to go to the site, and the construction that's going on there daily is amazing. If you get an opportunity, please drive by the site and take a peek at the site. Did you have anything to say about it, Dr. Thornton, any addition?
They, I mean, they have all the footers except for the kindergarten wing. It's amazing the progress. You really can't see all the footings from the road, and you do see part of it coming out of the ground now, but yeah, I encourage you to make an appointment with Dr. Coleman and get your hard hat and get you out there and walk it. It is interesting to see the process from, from the ground up, so.
We wanted to meet you out there today, but you know, we had an.
I know. You had some meetings.
We had a whole lot of meetings going on.
But don't wear your nice shoes or nice clothing.
See, we had to dress up for those meetings, and they were all back-to-back. Thank you.
All right. So what we're gonna take a look at here, I think, if you can see the words cafeteria on that, I don't know, Eric, does this say, oh, there we go. What we're gonna look at is the cafeteria and the auditorium. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So when I do start the video, we're gonna, the main focus is gonna be on this wing right here. If you notice, this is only kindergarten, first grade, second grade areas. Everything else is on the second floor. So you will not take a look at the second floor tonight, that will be next month, but right now, we'll take a look at the cafeteria and auditorium area. All right? As you can see, this was last month and some of the time period before, the footers were being dug, and the foundation wasn't laid yet. Some of the actual center blocks was just arriving on site, and this would look like, the site looked like on May thirty-first. So as you can see, the foundation is laid down, the bricks are coming up. The site looks totally different than this, you know, nine days later. Wanted to try to get some more pictures to show you exactly, but I would try to wait one day before the next school board meeting, so then we're right up to date with that. So this is the site for right now. All right?
So that area right there has walls all around it right now.
Yes.
And, yes, if you drive by, you will see it's finally out of the ground, and the walls are rising in that area.
Right. They actually have the whole hallway built. The trust for the first floor will be in next week to start putting the trust on the cafeteria and auditorium area.
So you're still on target for opening September of 2023.
September 2023.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Are there any questions concerning New Hardy? Anything, any information you'd like for me to bring back to the board?
Just keep us on target.
Keep us on target.
We promised those little kids that they will be going to new school in September 2023.
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have our next item on the agenda, report from the superintendent, Title I, II, III, and IV Grants. Sixteen point one. Oh, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Maybe I should try again. Good evening. Madam Chairperson, Dr. Thornton, fellow school board members, my name's Laura Cummings. I'm the federal grants coordinator at the central office, and today you should have before you the Title I, Title II, III, and IV federal grants for the 2022-23 school year for your approval. So basically, I'm here to see if you just have any questions. So basically, I'm here to see if you just have any questions.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Okay, at this time, we need an action, motion to approve the title grants for the upcoming school year.
Is that a motion to submit?
To approve.
To approve, okay. Well, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion then to approve Title 1, Title 2, Title 3, and Title 4 Grants for the next school year.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. What is your pleasure? Mr. Cunningham, how do you vote on the title grant?
I vote yea.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, motion five zero. Motion passes. Mrs. Cummings, you're still in action.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Y'all have a nice evening.
You're welcome. Okay. We have V H S L membership application for 2022-2023. That's a motion, we need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the V H S L applications for the 2022-2023 school year.
And the V H L S L stands for Virginia High School League.
Madam Chair, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the application for the Virginia High School League. At this time, we will take a vote. Mr. Cunningham, what is your vote for the Virginia High?
Madam Chair, I'll vote yea.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Okay. We have Item 16.3 Farm Hand Program. Have our farmer here today. Did I skip someone? I still, because I, okay.
They're together.
They're together, okay.
We are, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Thornton. It's actually an awesome meeting for us to do this, because this has been Dr. Thornton's idea from the get-go, so I'm pretty excited that we're able to share this. Daniel and I have been working, like I said, with Dr. Thornton to create a farm hand position at the Land Lab, and it's specifically going to be focused on graduating students with disabilities.
Okay.
So essentially, students, as they graduate, will have the opportunity to apply for this position and become an employee of Iowa White County Schools. So our agricultural land lab farm hand, there you go, is going to be a 12-month position. It's going to have a pay of $11 an hour currently. It will be part-time in the sense that it's going to be three days a week. We are scheduling or hoping to have two positions offered, one as an AM shift from eight in the morning to 10:00, and one as a PM shift from 12:00 in the afternoon to 2:00 in the afternoon.
All right, so kind of what we're looking at, just under our job description, general farm maintenance, so it could be cleaning the barn out, cleaning animal enclosures, fence repairing maintenance, which y'all have been out there, you've seen, we have a lot of fence, so that's kind of a big thing, keep our animals in, keep them safe, keep various predators out, you know, that's kind of the number one goal. Feeding, that's a daily, you know, 12 months, I'm a 12-month position, that's a daily occurrence, whether our students are there or not, animals have to be fed and taken care of. Clean out animal enclosures, from time to time, you know, we'll have animals inside of the barn, that needs to be cleaned. We, as y'all have seen, when you come out to the barn, we usually try to keep it looking as clean as we can, just because we are so, so proud of it. Grounds maintenance, cutting grass, pulling weeds in flower beds, that is not contracted through SSC, we do all of that ourselves, at our request. When you run a farm, that's what your kids do, you know, that's what you do on a farm, is you take care of your own area. Inventory of animals every day, counting, make sure that nothing happened through the night, that nothing happened through the day, make sure you have everybody there and everybody's accounted for. And then cleaning various farm equipment from time to time, you know, we do wash it, keep it clean, wax some things, just make sure everything stays nice, protect our investments. So as with any job, there are going to be qualifications, farm work's not easy, so able to lift and carry 50-plus pounds, that's the average weight of a feed bag, is 50 pounds. Able to work in temperatures that vary with season and environment, you know, hot in the summertime, cold in the wintertime, and anything in between. Able to work with various forms of livestock safely and in a responsible and respectful manner, that's very important. Not only you want to protect your livestock, but you also don't want to get hurt by them as well. We have two cows out there right now that average about 800 pounds apiece, so they can't hurt you very quickly. Follow multi-step directions with support and complete them in a timely manner. You know, it's, when we're feeding, this animal gets this amount of feed, that animal gets that amount of feed, everything is weighed out, so we need to make sure that is, that's followed as well. Able to operate hand tools, both manual and mechanized, there will be time for fixing things, we have the greenhouse that will still be in the summertime and through the course of the year doing things in when our students might be out or doing another project. And then able to detect problems of defective animal enclosures and report it to the farm manager, that's very important to me. I walk everything every day, but I miss things as well, so two sets of eyes is always better than one to make sure that everything looks the way that it should.
So currently, we, in our transition program, we currently collaborate with DARs, which is the Department of Rehabilitative Services, and through DARs, we're able to offer our current students pre-employment transition services, which is called Pre-ETS. And those services include things like job exploration, counseling, work-based learning experiences, counseling on post-secondary training and education, workplace readiness, and instruction and self-advocacy. Since this position is open for students after they've graduated, they're now adults, so that Pre-ETS collaboration with DARs now becomes vocational rehabilitation. So we've partnered with DARs, as students will be, as students exit the school, they have the opportunity with their families to apply for vocational rehabilitation services. So what we're going to be doing is through, through our partnership with DARs and for students who have applied for, have been accepted for VR services, we are going to be using that pathway to, to kind of fill these positions. So with VR, services include things like career counseling, vocational evaluation, job training options, supported employment, job placement retention, and follow-up. Our candidate pool, like I said, is going to be sort of funneled through this process, through our collaboration with DARs. We will be looking for students who have participated in our current transition program. We are going to be looking for students who graduated from Smithville High and or Windsor High, and who have qualified, like I said, for that VR service through DARs. So essentially, if eligible for DARs, these graduating students, they can work with their counselor in considering this position as a farm hand, as a potential employment opportunity for themselves. DARs will contract with an outside vendor, and they're going to offer these adult employees support while on the job. And that will allow a continuum of support for the employee while learning the job and help Daniel alongside to understand, you know, the needs of that employee at the time. I do want to point out that this is one opportunity that's new to us, that we are creating on our own. Essentially, we're hoping that, you know, we can be, that we, the school division can be an employment option for students with disabilities as they graduate. We do currently have many community partners that offer our students employment after they graduate, and I do want to just point out, we're so excited that SSC has recently hired one of our graduates. He'll be starting on June 13th, and he has a full-time job, he's going to be working at Windsor Elementary School, and this was achieved through his dedication and in his job coaching, and that partnership, like I said, with SSC and our, and our transition coordinator of that program, and he'll be starting this month, so we're excited for that. O'Reilly's has also partnered with us in our transition program, and they've hired one of our students who's currently working part-time, and he will start full-time when he graduates, and we have our fingers crossed for Burger King. We have a student currently interviewing, and we're hoping that he gets that, that position as well. So we are thankful for our community partners, and we're really excited to be an option for our kids as well.
Okay, very good.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
I just think it's a wonderful program, excellent program, and I think you said, oh, any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. So you've got two shifts, each two hours apiece. Is, is that enough time, or is that a regulation with DRS, or, you know?
It is enough time. What I understand from working with DRS is that the job itself needs to be consistent throughout the year. So when we were determining whether or not it should be a summer employment option, or seasonal work, or full-time, we did go with the 12-month option for that employee so that they can, because that is a requirement of DARs.
Okay, and the two hours is just, that's what we came up with?
To be part-time, correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Madam Chair, if I can add one, I want to thank Daniel, not just for this, but from day one, as the farm manager, he has helped make that land lab the reality it is today, so he deserves a lot of credit. And Ms. Magnus has done a remarkable job with special education since she took that over. And I do want to say, I've discussed this with Joel Akry, who has a passion for this as well, and providing jobs for students with disabilities so that they have an opportunity to work in our community, to earn a living, and to participate fully as adults in our community. And I know, I hope this continues, and maybe hopefully one day, I know we have our job coaches, but we're limited to what we can do. Hopefully, I know Joel would probably like this as well, I don't want to speak for him, but I know we've talked, possibly somewhere in the future, a county job coach, because someone does need to go to these businesses and ensure the employees are doing well, what resources they may need, and hopefully that will allow employees to take a chance and let these individuals who can contribute in our community and have that opportunity. So I hope it continues.
And they want to do that. I, that's it?
That's it.
I have one question for Daniel. Do you all have sausage for sale?
We do.
Okay, all right.
We do, just email me and let me know, or come by and visit, but we do, we, I think we yielded this year 775 pounds of sausage.
Okay.
So we have a whole freezer full.
And if you're listening, please stop by, it's some of the best sausage I've had.
Thank you, we get a lot of compliments on it. And it's all due to the way the kids raise the animals, so that's where it starts.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Item 16.4 Preliminary SOL Report. Mrs. Getz.
Madam Chair, I'm going to take it.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay.
So, Madam Chair and Board Members, we normally give this report later in the year. So these are preliminary results so far, but there was a lot of concern when I went to the Board of Supervisors meeting about what we're doing to work on the instructional loss caused by the pandemic, and I know the board is aware of all the initiatives and software we use, but I just wanted to do this report to kind of give an update of where we are. And the instructional staff at the Central Office and the staffs at the schools implemented a strategic plan, utilizing a variety of software programs along with small group and individualized instruction within the classroom. So this is not extra hours in the day, but strategizing how to use software to free up a teacher to then meet with maybe one student, maybe a group of students, and go back and remediate while still teaching the new standards for the next year, which there were gaps that they missed as they were at home. And so these are the preliminary results. Who's driving? You driving? Okay. So this is the division combined rate, so this is all of the schools' reading and math results, and you see on the left column, the left two columns are reading, that's reading 2019, so prior to the pandemic, we thought that was the best year to compare. And then this year, you see, the blue is the actual percentage of students who pass, the yellow is growth. So if students show enough growth, that counts as a pass. So if you look at that with the year and a half or two years of the pandemic, our instructional staff deserve amazing credit. We lost two points overall, but gained in growth. And in math, we did drop in the pass rate from 83 to 73, but we saw that coming with preliminary tests that we give and benchmarks we give. Also nationally, we saw that from data, and math, as you know, is building blocks.
Yes.
And missing a vital building block. So we think that is some of that, and, but still, to achieve 70 for all areas is accredited, 75 for reading. To do that after the pandemic is amazing, so I take my hats off to staff for doing that, and I do want to thank Mike and Susan for leading instruction during this time. They did a great job. So I already said, the threshold for accreditation reading is 75, and growth is included in that number. So these are the individual schools, and you can see all of them are at 75 before growth, except for Carrollton and Westside, and we still do have some expedited testing happen, so that number could come up more, but all of them are accredited with that and growth, and you see very high numbers. They're doing well. Next slide. And then these are the math for, for the various elementary middle schools, and again, you see very good numbers. You see Westside and Georgie Tyler struggling a little bit in math, but with the growth numbers are accredited. And I think it is important, all of our students don't start at the same point, and they have different gaps, so the fact that they're growing is a great sign. Okay. This is Smithville High School, pass rates, and you see just a little drop in reading, actually gone up in math, a little drop there in science. History is a concern, and history does not count for accreditation anymore, but we need to do a better job in history, because who it does count for is that student trying to get a verified credit and graduate. We need to do a better job and look at what happened this year at Smithville High School in history, and I'm sure the staff will report back to you later as you prepare for next year, and what steps they're going to take to make sure we do a better job in, in history.
And it's important, Dr. Thornton, that we do a better job in history, because Iowa White County has a lot of history in it, and we are also located on the East Coast where there's a whole lot of history. So, you know, I can understand we've been in the pandemic, but even before the pandemic, it was love, so history used to be one of the easy subjects. But maybe that's, maybe the students were told that it really is not going to count anymore, so we're just not going to do as much. I don't know.
I don't know, we didn't tell them. And it counts for them, they know they have to pass it to graduate.
Right, okay.
It counts for them. And so this is Windsor High School pass rates, and you see they've done a very good job, and above 70 in every area, and this is after the pandemic. This is amazing. I think it's important, and I think some of the scores were weaker, we need to really look at. scores were weaker. We need to really look at, uh, and did we follow the scope and sequence? We have a lot, as we have a lot of turnover in teachers, as they get older and retire, we've had a great staff. We have new teachers coming in who haven't taught this subject matter. It's important that we have a scope and sequence in place that all teachers are following because that's what's on the test. And that is why we purchased the Hampton Scoping Sequence and additional resources for teachers to use if they so choose. And so I do really want to congratulate the Windsor High School staff for, for following their scope and sequence, for using those resources and producing that kind of results. Those are strong results in Windsor.
And I have a question for you. Granted, you just said that Hampton Scoping Sequence that we purchased last year.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
And that's what was, uh, implemented this year for our students to use, for the staff to use with students, instructional pieces. So, uh, I'm just going to say it helped getting their scores up coming back after pandemic when you had some students at home, some students at school, and you merged them all together. So I'm thinking it, I'm, I'm sure it helped. I know a year ago, we got some little flashback from it, but you know, hey, they put it in place and it worked. It's important that we, um, it's important if you know that there are educational pieces out there, material out there that can help our students, we reach out to the sources and bring it back to help them. Because the most important thing here is that we educate all the children. And, you know, sometime as adults, we don't see the rhyme or reason for certain things. That's why we have the experts in the classrooms. Thank you very much.
And, and the last two slides, uh, I voiced my concern about the achievement gap about two years ago, right before the pandemic. And, uh, then the pandemic hit and it has exasperated the achievement gaps between white and black students. This goes beyond instructional practices. It, it requires a community effort as we address this in our new strategic plan. And it is addressed in our new strategic plan. It also requires adults in this community to stop ignoring white and black discrepancies in achievement and discipline and have intelligent conversations and bring solutions to the table so all our children can be successful in school. For adults to sit here in public and scream at each other and don't want to use the word black and white, I do see black and white. I see that some of you are black, some of us are white, some of us are, I don't know what your personality has got. And I'll never try to say your name. But, but we all have differences.
We do.
And they are there. And we have differences in economics. We have differences in our family life. All of those things have to play. And to ignore black and white because you don't want to talk about it is ridiculous. It is how the state measures us. And that's why I'm showing this. Same thing. Look at those gaps in Carrollton between black and white students in reading. A 33-point gap. It's unacceptable.
You're right.
In Carsville, a 48-point gap. Hardy, which is our largest population of minority students, still a 26-point gap. Windsor Elementary, 25, and Westside, 20. Need to do something about it, just like the task force you said for safety. Needs to be a task force. And we need to stop. Do, for 25 years, I've heard the achievement gap and no one's closed it. And because no one wants to address the hard issues. The next one is math.
But before you go there, the most important thing, I just heard you say, the achievement gap, especially with minorities, it's important that we bring on board family engagement. That's, and look at me, I'm black. I own it, okay? Yes, I am. A lot of our parents do not engage in their child's daily school, get involved with the schools daily, okay? Kids come home, you have homework? Yeah, do your homework. But do you sit there with the child and do that homework? Do you reach out to that child's teacher and ask them, where's my child? What's going on? What can I do to help my child? It's all about family engagement. And I'm not saying that they don't want to do it. We need to have someone in place that can help them, train them, teach them to get through that process. So all of our students' scores can be the same, close to the same, not the large gaps that we have now. And it's up to us to do that because the community is not going to do that for us. It's all about the students. Thank you, Dr. Thornton. I won't interrupt anymore. Finish.
No, that's fine. This time.
But it's just, I, I'm just passionate about those things, you know? I know what's going on in my culture, okay? I see it all the time. I can remember when we were out during the pandemic and I would come to you all and say, hey, the kids are not on task. They're outdoors playing. We could see it, but what could we do? We put the resources out there for them. If the parents didn't come to get it for the child, the child wasn't going to do it. We depend on these children. The parents need to be trained. The parents need to be taught. This is what you do. It's called good parenting skills. I'm not saying you're not a good parent, but all of us need reinforcement. I don't care what your profession is, you have to go to some workshop sometime to reinforce your skills. We have to reinforce our parents, some of our parents, to be good parents when it comes to your child's education. Thank you.
Okay. And the last slide is just math and very similar. Uh, 20 points to 32-point gaps and, and just unacceptable. And, uh, so I, I hope we dig deeper and look at the data. And then also, we will have a plan, I know, I'm not going to say we, they will have a plan for the individual students. We identify students. Those students in yellow are still not there. They're growing. And the students that are not in blue or yellow that haven't passed, we're identifying them and what are the additional resources they need? What's the additional time they need to get them to that finish line? And all that is done, a lot of that is done in the summer and as we look at data and prepare for the next year. And a lot happens with the instructional team and central office and within the buildings throughout the summer to get ready again. And, but I'm very proud of that whole team and this community that has helped their kids get where they are. I think any school system would be very proud of these scores after the pandemic. So I just wanted to say.
For the summer, are you talking about the freckle? Is one of the programs freckle as far as?
Freckle is one of the programs we use, yes.
Mr. Vines, you had something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I, those numbers just really, they enlighten me. And being a black male that graduated from one of the high, from the school system, from experience, black children, our black kids respond to black instructors. We have a lack of black instructors in our county. Oftentimes, our U responds better to someone that looks like them, that sounds like them when they're teaching. Uh, it's, you know, people don't want to, I just let it elephant out the box, you know? We don't have a whole lot of black teachers in Alawak County. So our students, our black students don't respond well. So if we hire more black stu- teachers, I believe you would see that the scores would go up, you know, uh, in the areas of reading and math. Um, it's just, I don't know what has happened over the years and why there are not many applying to this school system, but, you know, there are not many black teachers in Alawak County school systems. And if you want a good response from our black students, we need to get some black teachers in the school.
Mr. Vines, may I say something there?
Sure.
I, I had a little experience there and I know what you're, you're saying. The issue with hiring black staff in any school district across America right now is, uh, is, is, is pretty much not happening because the majority of minority students are going to school. Now they're majoring in areas other than teaching. And the few that are, are majoring in teaching, they go into the larger schools, uh, districts, big cities, to look for jobs. They do not come to areas like Alawak County, okay? And it's not that this, uh, we are not trying to hire them, they're just not available. And the pool that they have out there, when staff goes out to search for them, they go to the big school districts. And this is what's going on. It's not about, um, uh, them not hiring the staff, they just don't have the staff to hire. Because our minority students are no longer majoring in classes to teach. And that is a his, it's, it's a little history about that. They're going into other fields now. They're all over the place. They're medicine, they're in engineering, they're, all of the STEM projects. This is what we've been pushing and this is what they're going into, but they're not going into STEM education.
And Madam Chair, if I may, yeah. We did that research and your traditional schools for education, Longwood University, uh, JMU, CNU has some, we researched, their numbers are down whether they're white or black college students going in the field of education.
That's true.
And we need to start respecting teachers and what they do and paying them better too. And we may get some young people that, that want to go into that profession. But just to give you an example, I think it was Norfolk State last year, or maybe the year before, uh, Cheryl looked at that. There were eight graduates. Those eight graduates went to Newport News and Norfolk.
Beach problem.
Which are, they're, they're more minority students and they pay better than Alawak.
That's true.
And, and that's where they're, they live and that's where they're going. So it is difficult, which is why the state, there's a shortage everywhere in the state and country, which is why the state has done initiatives like cultural competency training to understand. Because you're right, I coached football and until I had those young men and, and went into their homes and they came into my home, I had no idea. There are cultural differences. We are all human, but we have very different cultures. And until you have that understanding and empathy, you may not reach that student. So you're right. And so there's a lot of answers. That's one. But, uh, we need to continue to try to encourage all young people to look at education.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. You finished?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Gatz, for giving up your slot tonight. Okay. Alright. At this time, we will move on to, uh, action item 17. Uh, is action on closed session items. 17.1 personnel report.
I think I was early on this one, but now I think we already had made a motion on this, um, to make a motion to adopt the revised personnel report and addendum. And to let everybody know that the revised personnel report is with the clerk if you wanted a copy.
And we did, we did, uh, did the action on that earlier. So, and it did pass. Thank you.
So you adopted the, you adopted the revised one, but you still need to approve the personnel report and addendum.
Personnel report. Okay, okay.
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second? Oh, Mr. Vines, second. We have a motion and second on the floor at this time. Mr. Mr. Cunningham?
Uh, I'm, uh, yea.
Personnel report. Yea, okay.
Yea, yep.
So as they're, they're voting, I do say, we do have copies of the revised personnel report if anyone wants a copy.
Okay. Motion passes. Five zero. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda, we have a, an exchange student. Last month, we had several and this month, we have the one that was not available at that time, all of the information. And, uh, what are you, what's your pleasure on this one? It's exchange student number 222304.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the exchange student 2223404 for admission to Windsor High School for the 2022, 2023 school year.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the admissions of exchange student number 223, 222304. What is your pleasure? Mr. Cunningham?
This is a vote for the exchange student that's going to be going to Windsor, Windsor High School.
Yea.
Okay, vote. Motion passes. Five zero. Thank you very much. The next item is the EA22-01 Early Admissions. We need an action.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to consider EA22-01, um, for early admission.
Uh, well, let's go. This is the, uh, Mr. Colick, I know this is the first time we've had one of these on here. So let me explain and maybe you want to, uh, revise the motion. Okay. This was the one where, uh, the early admission, the, uh, parents wanted the student to enter early.
Right.
And, uh, that meant the, uh, state guidelines said they must be a certain age, a certain date. So, but you can go on with your motion, but I just wanted to explain.
So it's, right.
No, if it doesn't meet the requirements, no. I, I won't make that motion. I withdraw that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. So we still need to have a, a motion if you would like to deny that request?
Well, Madam Chair, um, based on our conversation, I make a motion that we deny, um, early admission to EA22-01, uh, for the upcoming school year.
Do I hear a second?
Uh, this, welcome to discussion.
Yes, you can discuss. Let's, let's put the motion on the table, then we can discuss.
Can we table the motion for a moment, John?
What's that?
What are the, what are the requirements for early admission?
You must be five before October 1. By the last day, September 30th. So on October 1, you, you should be five years old.
How do you feel about it?
Oh, you know, I, 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 uh, did you have something you want to say, Mr. Vines?
Yes, that's a, that's a state.
Right. It was a state. Yeah, that's a state. It doesn't have anything.
It's a deadline.
It doesn't have anything to do with Alawak County. And, uh, I will second that motion, Mr. Colick. And, and now if anybody want to have a discussion, we do have a motion on the floor. And the reason I'm going to discuss, uh, uh, second that motion is because it's not that we, the board sitting here, we don't want young children starting in school if they're ready. We're not, we're not saying they're not ready. We're just saying we need to stick with the state policies and guidelines, okay? If we choose to let one child in, then all of you with children that falls in that guideline going to be up here next month. I want a child starting to school and we don't have the room, okay?
Madam Chair, I, I think it's, it, it's a subject of closed session, this particular case.
Okay.
So I, I don't think there needs to be any discussion. You all, you all, you all had your discussion in closed session.
Alright, okay.
You, you can just go ahead and vote.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Pack, Attorney. Keep us straight. Thank you. Appreciate that. Alright, we'll have a vote then. Mr. Cunningham?
Your vote for the, uh, early admissions?
Uh, uh, I, I vote, uh, okay, that's confusing, but I'm, I'm voting not to, uh, not to it, uh, not to do the early admission. So would that be a yea or a nay?
A nay.
Yea.
Okay, so that's a nay then.
Mike, that would be a yea.
Okay, okay. We're going to need to do the vote over again because some of us.
Yeah, I thought so. It didn't, okay.
Tracy, can you read the vote?
So I, I concur, I concur with Mr. Colick with not admitting, uh, the student early.
Right. Okay. So we're going to re-vote.
Okay.
I had it right the first time.
I did it. I changed.
We get it?
Miss Dial, did you? It didn't come through again? It didn't come through again?
Mm-mm.
No.
Can I get a verbal from Miss Dial?
Miss Dial, what's your vote?
Yea. Mr. Colick? Mr. Colick?
Yea.
Oh, and Mr. Vine?
Yea.
Mine came up.
Mine came up.
Mine came up, too. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, item number eighteen, adoption of consent agenda. This is an action item.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as attached and presented.
Second, we have a motion and a second on the table at this time. Mr. Cunningham? We need a most, we need a vote on the consent agenda. I did say motion, I'm not a vote, I'm sorry. Okay, motion passes. Five zero. Thank you. All right, moving to item number nineteen, policy updates and revisions. Is there anyone that's going to do the policy updates or revisions?
Please give the first read, do you have?
Okay, we did the first. But we do have in the next, well, nineteen point one is a first read, so it's no action. Uh, did any board members have any questions about that? Okay?
No.
There are no questions, no concerns, we'll move on to nineteen point two, policies for second read on approval. And, uh, that is an action item.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve policy GBAB as presented.
I second that motion.
I have my motion as second, that we approve policy GBAB as presented. At this time, we will take a vote. Mr. Cunningham, this is a vote to approve policy GBAB as it was presented. Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number nineteen point three, regulations and exhibits. It's just information, if you don't have any, uh, concerns with that?
No questions.
Board?
No questions.
Okay. Any board member, any? Okay, at this time, we'll move on to item number twenty, request to speak, non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes. In accordance to policy BDDH-dash-E, presentations of information on any subject will be concluded at the direction of the board. No person will be recognized to speak more than once. Citizens scheduled on the agenda to speak will be permitted four minutes maximum time to their presentation. Delegations will be requested to limit their speakers to two. Persons speaking are asked to be specific, state the issues for the board's consideration, and attach a copy of the prepared remarks. If you have remarks, they should be given to the school board clerk. Please do not approach the board members. Any matter relating to a specific student will be heard by the school board in a closed meeting. First, we have Mr. Roy Gilbert.
All right. Good evening. Um, I'm Roy Gilbert, I live in Eagle Harbor, I believe that's District Two, did I get that right this time?
Yes.
Yes, getting better at this. All right, um, just a little bit about myself, I've been employed here, uh, at NNS Shipbuilding for upwards of twenty years. I'm a graduate apprentice, kind of associate's, bachelor's, and master's degree in business administration specializing in project management. Um, my role there is I'm a general foreman responsible for nuclear paint and refueling work, currently getting my, uh, security clearance. Um, I've been a mentor, a team-up mentoring, uh, over in Portsmouth for the past seven years, and I've been coaching here at Smithfield for the past two years. Um, I was notified in late February, uh, by the HHS, SHS staffs that my name had suddenly been flagged for, uh, being a part of a social motorcycle club that was affiliated with another club of some sort of gang affiliation. Um, the instructions I received were to reach out to Alawak County Sheriff's Department, get a letter signed from them saying that I was not under investigation for any gang activity. Um, I reached out and, and followed those instructions. The feedback I got was that the, the Sheriff's Department doesn't provide that type of information. Um, they don't write letters or recommend, recommendation, anything of that sort. So I reconvene with Dr. Briggs, or Principal Briggs, uh, Athletic Director, Coach Batesmore, and they were all kind of befuddled on what to do next. Um, so I reached out to central office by phone, um, I requested to speak to Dr. Thornton so we can kind of get some clarity on the issue, and, uh, I received a phone call back from Principal Thrift. He, too, was kind of befuddled on, on what we should do. Um, I'm pretty well-known around the, the campus, I'm at frequent sporting events, supporting the student athletes, and, uh, I'm just here before you now looking for some sort of direction on, one, how do I get my name off this list? Um, I have zero criminal background, I don't have any tattoos, nothing about me is involved in gang activity or anything of that sort. So I just would like to get some direction on who I could talk to to help justify my case and, and continue to, uh, assist our student athletes in the community.
Okay. Mr. Gilbert?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you finished?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Do I sit down now, or?
Uh, normally, normally for the public hearing, we just hear what you have to say.
Uh-huh.
And when we consider, we will give you an answer later in writing, okay?
Ten-four.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out, and, uh, we will consider the request. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, next, we have, uh, Mr. Rex Alphen.
Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Thornton, how are you all? Um, Rex Alphen, I reside in the Carsville District. When I heard Dr. Thornton was retiring, I felt like I need to come and say a few words to you. Way back and going back a number of years, I haven't seen you in a good while. I was serving on the Board of Supervisors, I don't think I was a chair at the time. So it required Dr. Thornton and I to have a lot of back and forth and give and take and, and how to deal with a lot of issues. And I just wanted to publicly say what a pleasure it was working with you, Dr. Thornton. You were a straight shooter, you were very honest with me, um, I could always get in touch with you. Any kind of issues came up that I needed to know, you would call me, and I could al- I could always tell you were passionate about education, you were very, very, um, experienced in that area, and I always thought Alawak County was fortunate and blessed to have you as our superintendent, and I personally was. I remember, you know, there's often a lot of conflict, well, I should say challenges, between Board of Supervisors and the school board as far as funding and stuff, and, and very difficult, it's kind of set up for conflict. But when Dr. Thornton first came on the board, I think he was the first superintendent that came to us, and things were tight, money was tight right then, he came forward and he said, "I think we're good this year." I don't think I ever heard anybody say that, I don't know if you remember that. Now, the next year, he wanted a few raises, let's get that straight. But, uh, you were, you were very gracious and good to work with, and I just want to say on behalf of myself, I think the board, my family, I have three boys that attend Carsville Elementary School, they just love it, um, and the community at large, I just want to say thank you for your service.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Alphin.
Okay.
Start my timer. Hello, board. My name is Natalie Roberts. I came just to give a shout-out to the principals, the teachers, the teachers assistants, the vice principals, the cafeteria counselors, the custodians, bus drivers, nurses, assistants, readings assistants, and everybody who took part in all our schools, especially our parents who had to sacrifice a lot. First of all, I would like to thank Hardy Elementary for offering tutoring for children who needed extra help this year. As we know, we all were virtual, and some of our students needed extra help. I wanted to thank them because my son was able to take part in the tutoring. I made a sacrifice and got up every morning to bring him on Tuesdays and Thursdays for, um, tutoring, um, and it was able to help him pass his SOLs. And he was very ecstatic about that, and, and I showed him what his hard work, you know, would also do. Also, Dr. Thornton, I just want to congratulate you and tell you, enjoy your vacation. Thank you for everything that you have done with this school board. Um, also, the teachers, they put in so much time with us, and I just want to thank them. I even thank you all for using the Hampton's, uh, curriculum. I graduated from Hampton Schools, um, and we always were trying to put the children's education first. Uh, I had also heard a board member, um, say he had went to a Virginia national meeting, and they were discussing bringing bibles to school. Now, I love the Lord Savior, Jesus Christ, he is my savior, but our teachers, I don't feel need to be acting like they have to do Bible study. So I would like you all to reconsider that, if that is something that you are, are trying to bring to our classrooms. Um, we do the P- Pledge of Allegiance, and we also have a moment of silence, and I think that suffices enough. I know for me, I take my children to Sunday school, and I also teach them at home, that's where we come in. The teachers have enough on their plate, and they don't need extra things to take them afro- away from the school curriculum that they have to do with our children. Um, I'm glad that they're doing it cursive writing. Some schools not even doing that anymore. My second grade can write in cursive now. And that was another, a nice thing, too, my son who went and, um, did the virtual, his tutoring teacher was his teacher, who was his virtual teacher, so they were actually able to meet in person, and that also made a big difference, too. Um, my heart also felt great, um, also, because I had wrote down things that I wanted, um, you all to take, um, a look at over the summer. Um, like the school board and this Board of Supervisors and the county police took over more security measurements to make sure that our schools are safe and, um, our parents can feel safe for our children to be at school. Um, I sent out an email also to look, um, for, for, for Ms., um, Tyra to look at. Um, it was just a different security that another school was looking at, just other options that is out there that we can look at. But again, um, when I was in Hampton, I was always used to a security guard, I was always used to a police officer at our school all the time, so that wasn't new for me. But I just do thank, um, Smithfield for just having great teachers, and I just want to thank you all for being there for our children this year. I was looking at the numbers, I did get a little teary-eyed, but I said, you know what? When the parents take time with the children, those numbers go up. So I do thank God for my students, and, I mean, my, um, children being able to pass their SOLs this year, and thank you all, teachers.
Thank you, Mrs. Roberts.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Harder District. I want to thank the superintendent, I was trying to get to him before he, last school board meeting, to thank him, but I say I'll get him before he leave. I really want to thank you for working with the school since Alawak County. I know it's rough, but you made a big sacrifice, and you see the job well done. And I want you to, um, continue to do what you do, and you always looked at for others. When you first came here, I always sat in the front. These superintendent we had, I came, I sat in the front, we did. And we talked, and you told me something, I never forget it. You told me, you said, you know what? I'm here for the students, and if anything I can do for you, let me know. And you lived up to that. For many times I called you, I got a response back. I hate to see you go, and I wish you could stay more, but you know what you got to do. So, on that note, be blessed and be safe, okay? And I appreciate you. And move it on along. A lot of, a lot of, I found out that, uh, a lot of people are leaving us, and I want to thank all of you for the help that y'all provided to the students, and helping me, because like Ms. Tyra said, I've been advocating for the school system and the county and the public for a minute of years, and I always thought that if you do something, do the best you can. You're not perfect, nobody is, but we move on. So I want to thank those who are retiring or just changing jobs. I thank y'all. I thank y'all. Y'all know I did with special ed, for this, I've been acting on the school system, and for, I just found out for working with the farmhands and students I seen that's going to businesses, that's, that work it down part-time. I have always advocated for special ed students to get the same thing that we call regular students can participate in. You don't know how much that made me feel when they said stu- a student with, this student with challenges can get a job. This helps us, that helps them to, to continue to move forward regardless of what situation they in.
One minute.
So I congratulate with the farmhands and Mr. Wagner, because like I say, I bought that idea and said something to that a long time back, but it just come to part. And I want to let the board know, I know that y'all have some information that I was working on, um, that I need to get a response to by the next school board meeting as possible, because not, I hear other people just wanted to move it on to another level, and I don't want it to go there. So if you can let me know, if you sit down and talk about it and move on, I thank you for it.
Thank you, Mr. Uzle.
That's all.
Okay, we would like to thank all of the, uh, public participants tonight that came out, and you will be hearing from us in writing. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number twenty-one point one, and that's board comments. Any board member have any comments? Okay.
So both Windsor and Smithfield have graduation tomorrow, so of course Neely's not here, because she'll be graduating tomorrow, which is great, I'm so happy for her. And, um, I'm really excited to meet the new liaison, Samantha, and talk to her, and hopefully help her through, so.
Okay. And I hope you have a wonderful summer.
I hope you have one. All of you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Certainly. Madam Chair, first, I want to congratulate, uh, all the high school seniors that are going to be graduating tomorrow. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend. Um, we've had some pretty severe illnesses in the house, and it probably wouldn't be prudent for me to be in a crowd of people, uh, hence me back in this corner by myself. Secondly, and more importantly, um, or just as important, I, I want to thank Dr. Thornton. Dr. Thornton and I, uh, didn't really get off on the right foot, uh, last year about this time, and it, it went downhill until about, uh, December. Then we sat down and talked, and I have found, although, you know, Dr. Thornton and I, you know, don't agree on everything, uh, we're able to come to really good understandings about ea- where each other is coming from, and I've found that to be very, very heartening. And every single time that I asked Dr. Thornton for anything, I got a response, usually in minutes, but always within the same day, except for an email I sent you a couple hours ago. And, and he's always been completely honest with me. And so many people in the community, you know, who don't know him, have, have said things that they, you know, they may have perceptions. that they, you know, they may have perceptions. But the reality is, this man has done a lot for this county, an incredible amount for this county. When you go out and you look at our CTE labs and all the education, we've got big cities coming in saying, "How do we do that?" Okay? We've got cities and other counties that spend a heck of a lot more money trying to figure out how to match little old Alawak and a CTE program. And that's all because of Dr. Thornton. So, you know, for the few disagreements we have, I, I, I think, I hate to see you go. Like I told you when I found out you were retiring, I wish you would stay another year because this is going to be a tremendous loss to the county. I have learned an awful lot from you, and I hope to continue to learn more from you as you're going to be a citizen of the county. And so I can, I, I hope we can have a friendship on a whole alternate level because I, I really value everything that you bring. And again, I, I just really want to thank you for everything you've done for this county, Dr. Thornton.
I appreciate that, Jim.
I also want to, I do want to say something as far as you leaving. Before I was on the board, I was a parent like everybody else. I had no clue how much work you do. I really didn't. I want, I see why those bags, you're like, yeah, you're ready. And you deserve every bit of the retirement. I don't think people on the outside sees the work that's done, but you carry everything on your shoulders. Oftentimes when we get questions, I'm like, no, that's not at the school board level. That's actually at the superintendent. Our job description is about four major things, and everything else is you. So hats off to what you've done. Again, the CTE program is awesome. You deserve the building to be named after you. That was your baby. You with Mike Lombardo, y'all did a great job with not even having a tax increase to us and providing all the equipment and all the things that you did. I was, I was awed by that. And that's, that doesn't come, I'm not awed very often. So the fact that you did, y'all did an amazing job. So both of y'all are going to truly be missed. All the staff, Cheryl Elliott leaving, and I mean, it, it, it provides for new growth and, and new ideas and people to come in and kind of like take off from where you guys have left off. But also, it's kind of bittersweet because you guys did a great job. So even though I only worked with y'all from September into now, I have a true appreciation for what you guys did do. My kids are in the school system, so I greatly appreciate that. So they'll, they'll benefit for many years off of the work that you guys put in. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Vines?
I'd like to thank Dr. Thornton for his services. Somehow feels like he's not really leaving since he's going to be here still in the county. And I know he might be giving us some type of wisdom and guidance as we go through this process. So the word consultant rings in my mind.
That's it? Well, Dr. Thornton, I was going to say, I think Mr. Vines said, "He's going to be a consultant." True. But I want to hire you to be my golf coach. Because I know that's probably where I'll find you, tee-ing off or hide your house someplace or something like that. And I'm serious about that, too. You know, they said, "Great minds are found on the golf course," okay? And you know what? I seriously, I've done a lot of things in my life since I've been on this earth, but one of the best things I've done for Alawak County was the day that I made that phone call to you and said, "Hey, we want you." And you said, "I'll come." And I think that's one of the best things I've done for this county because you came here and you molded the staff where you wanted them to be, to help the youth in our county. And we have seen our youth going out there. Tomorrow at commencement, these young people will be over at Liberty Live, and they'll be walking out with millions of dollars to go out to continue their education, their careers, whatever they want to. And a lot of that is because of you and your staff, and we thank you for that. You came here with a vision, and that vision you put in place, and we thank you for it. Just like Mr. Uzle said, it was a long time, but we got there. And you did it in seven years. You did what you did in seven years, and some people stay places twenty and twenty-five, and they still trying to do it, okay? Thank you very much. And on the other side, we welcome you to this community, okay? We want great minds like you in the community. When we go out, we're going to say, "Hey, Dr. Thornton, how you doing?" The kid's going to be able to say, "That's Dr. Thornton." They're going to continually call you superintendent for years, okay? Because to them, you're going to still be the superintendent. And thank you, and best wishes in whatever you decide to do, okay? Thank you. Mr. Cunningham?
You're not asleep.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Did you want to make some remarks to Mr., I mean, Dr. Thornton?
I mean, everybody said something positive, and, and the only thing I can say is, "Thank you." Other school systems are looking at our CTE program, and we have the model. Because of, of Dr. Thornton, what he, his vision has made the model CTE program for what I believe is, is the best program and the greatest program in all of Virginia. And I'm not just saying that because that's what I think. I'm saying that because of what other people are saying. And as you know, Madam Chair, we had a district come by a couple of weeks ago to, uh, see our program, and, and I believe, I know they were impressed, but I do believe they're going to take some, some of what they've seen back to their school system. So again, thank you, Dr. Thornton. I mean, the seven years you, you've given to our county, it's just, it's been great. I mean, everybody's not, you know, it's one of those things where everybody's not happy about everything that people do, but I'm very happy. And there, there are more people that are happy. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. We heard you. Okay. Any more comments? Mr. Pax, would you like to say something to Dr. Thornton? Colleagues.
Um, I, I think I've said it before, but, um, you know, I, I think you've touched many lives, Jim. I, I, you know, I represent Alawak, but I also represent other school divisions and, you know, the, the folks who you have mentored in your past are out there, and they speak highly of you. And you leave a good legacy, and I'm, I'm glad to have worked with you and call you a friend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I do have a few words, Madam Chair, even though I spoke a lot tonight.
Okay, okay.
Because you really surprised me and my wife and son. I, I had no idea, and that is an amazing honor, and I really appreciate the entire board. And I, I do want to thank all the school board members I've worked with in Cumberland County, Mecklenburg County, and Alawak. It's been eighteen years as superintendent, and I'm still alive, so that's a good thing. And I'll tell you, my wife and my children who came through my systems, and it's hard to be the superintendent's son and daughter and wife. My wife travels a lot, so I think that's easier on her. And she doesn't watch our meetings. That's why I was shocked when she was here. And, but I do, I just jive it sometimes because, as you can see, I do get emotional. And CTE is very close to my heart, and I, I think everyone needs to remember, we should get students, if they want to go to college and get them the requirements, we should get all students there as an option. But if they don't want to, we should have other options for them. There's so many careers out there, and, and most of those careers, there's shortages now because we haven't concentrated on all those areas. So I hope we continue to do that. And I had seven great years here, and I've worked with a very innovative team that took risks with me. I think I scared some of them along the way, and what's he going to do next? And what's, what's he going to bring? But they didn't say, "Don't do it." They helped me find a way to do it. And, and that, that means a lot. We have so many dedicated educators in this county. Alawak is so lucky with the entire administrative team, teachers, boss, everybody. It's a great team. And I, I can't leave without preaching a little bit because I do believe so much in your unique gifts and talents. And I do hope education continues to shift from these standardized tests and concentrate more on deeper learning and developing communication skills and working together collaboratively to solve problems and challenges in the world. We're too divided. We need to come together and figure it out. Put those differences on the table, and let's compromise. Be creative. And I think the biggest thing is why I can't stand the standardized test. Our students need to take risks and be creative, and it's okay to fail. You learn from failure. Try something, and it's okay. We don't want our kids so scared to try something. So I hope we continue that shift. And I'm going to piggyback graduation. Students have always been the center of my work, and I'm excited that graduation's tomorrow. And it's always been my favorite event. And I do think it is a community, family, and educators' celebration of teamwork, that we all help these young people get to the finish line. And they are now starting their next phase of life, and we have all touched them and been a part of that. And, and that's amazing. And I think for this whole community, it's a job well-done. And I'm just proud that I've been a part of it for thirty-three years. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All remarks are said and done. Nothing else to come before this board, the last meeting for this school year of 2022, was not